Get the people what they wanna see. How you doing?
So what's this video man?
There's the press section. Ask who called you there. About to take that fall. Thought that was a joke, man. What I'm saying, if I got a Halloween candy get it on fire. Seven. Candace move shake. Candace move shake right there. My sorry about that.
I didn't, I look at seven more, I didn't know.
What's your name Denise Worgen Denise, nice to meet you.
Yeah, man. The man, the man.
It's paperwork. It's um, same people for a thing without the next thirty five hours. It's almost fourteen. Like you want to come, man, I wanna go. And to add it to, you know. I mean, if you order for eight, they're gonna be coming, that's one of the people that on your eight. But if somebody else wants to sell, you add them on your tier.
Probably you said, some celebrations.
I need sponsorship. No, 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 sponsorship, what I mean sponsorship is sponsor one of these shows, it's gonna be a good one.
No, I don't sponsor yet.
No, no, I got to the word, I'm gonna send it up. Excuse me, damn. Now is your good path, I'm like damn seven. I ain't saying break the code. I wanna show it up. Don't say, mostly me. Yeah, I know. Nah, I been trying. Oh my man, nah, I'm not live on YouTube, but it will be up there. Oh, Missy Jerry working out. Jerry here. That's been alright. This one is gonna get to you. Oh god, man. Satan. Oh my god, uh-oh.
The time is now, the time is now five forty-four and the Platte City Council meeting is now being called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. May, Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Miss Brusler?
Present.
Miss Fuertes?
Present.
Miss Burns?
Present.
Miss Wushad?
Present.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Present.
Miss Worden?
Present.
You have seven members present?
Thank you, we have seven members present. Now we have a question leaving, what kind of burns?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Y'all was trying for our prayer of blessings before we give our prayer of blessings, is there anyone that would like to remember someone that has passed on?
Um, Madam Chair.
Miss Burns?
I would like to um, have a moment of prayer or a moment of silence for, and this is um, Mayville Roman who passed away um, this past year, very long life, I believe ninety-four years. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to honor anyone else that went along, give me a little?
Yes, Madam. Yes, Madam Chair.
Miss Fuertes?
Yes, I, I would like to um, remember and have a special um, silent prayer for the family of Dr. Charles Banks as well as the family of um, Tanina Stanley. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to honor someone who went on the side?
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Lewis?
Yeah, I would like, what people could, ten thousand people was missing and I'd like to have a moment of prayer for them. Over the turkey over in that dam over there, the dam broke and put it off and nobody did nothing about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alright, seeing that we have no more, we will take this minute for the moment. Alright, so now it's time for the prayer, we will ask um, Pastor Fred Pelt, the force of the Lincoln, to say the prayer.
Yeah. Tessie, let us bow. First of all, we thank you for this day, we thank you for allowing us to rise one more time. We pray that you will shine your blessings down on us as we take care of the business of this city, strengthen us, use our mind in the right direction, transform us that we will be for the people, not for ourselves. We pray that you continue blessing us that we continue doing the things that will be pleasing in your sight. And all of these blessings we ask in Jesus' name and all the church say amen.
The reading of the disroiling Carson singing subsections, any person that persists to disrupting this meeting will be in violation of the Platte City Code Section thirty-one ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the bespoke and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest, violator shall be removed from the meeting. Is there any request for change or addition to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Miss Brusler?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to um, to vote immediately in sequence on any proposed agenda changes.
Alright, there's a motion to vote immediately in sequence, is there any support?
Support.
It has been um, moved and properly seconded, roll call Madam Clerk. What's your point?
You don't have any discussion.
Not at all when we voting about time, roll call Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Miss Lewis?
Yes.
Miss Brusler?
Yes.
Miss Fuertes?
No.
Miss Burns?
No.
Miss Wushad?
Yes.
Lit. Thank you, everybody. Worden?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, three no, that motion passes. Any request for changes in or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
I'd like to make a motion that um, we have a discussion either at the end of this meeting dealing with the opera burns, person young, and I would um, and I sort of move.
Okay, so you don't want an agenda change while I'm making a motion from Madam Clerk?
I did what she just made, I made my motion, yes, I've said.
Thank you, Mr. Mays, we just needed to hear one of the motions, so you want a motion to add what yet?
Ask the clerk.
At the end of the dinner, alright. Any support? Support. Support by the county clerk? Alright, roll call Madam Clerk.
What order?
What's your point?
Why are motions being made in property second and you don't, as a chair, as if there any discussion of the motion?
So we were, we were talking about the changes in the agenda, you have discussion?
The motion that was made has precludes this discussion because of limited time to vote immediately. And um, so I believe that this is, is out of order.
Absolutely, you are correct, Mr. Mays, that is, uh, border accounts manipulate the rules, so um, we will move on to the vote.
Our fear, we had a chair.
Not a problem. There is the appeal of the ruling of the chair. For ruling against. The base of the motion to change the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Um, please, no, no, we have, we have a second, well, what is your point? What is your point?
That's what you should've said, not no, no, let me say.
What is your point?
You're in a resume, getting up to a bad start. I call for a order, you should stop, say what's your point, my point is that um, when you don't stop immediately and then you confuse it, make it down, remember my point, I saw the point of order because you did not state my appeal properly. My appeal ain't on the table, my appeal is that whether I should be discussing after the motion was made by me in property second by Miss Burns, that's the proper order of my appeal, that's what you said.
Is that how you point of order?
Yeah, that's my appeal.
Okay, alright. Alright, so the appeal has been moved and properly seconded by Miss um, this, this.
Madam Chair.
Miss Worden?
I move that we uh, vote immediately on the appeal before discussion.
Okay, there is a motion for to vote immediately on this, what is your point?
Madam Chair, we're in an appeal.
Well, sure.
And she making a motion and an appeal and when the motion, the appeal was made in property second, my point is order that you had heard is out of order, you supposed to now be asking me in any discussion of the appeal, not entertaining the motion that's out of order by your, your road dog. Worden, you out of order, that's my point on it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mays, the motion always in order, so there is a motion on the floor.
Appeal the ruling, Madam Chair.
That's fine, so um, we will repeat the ruling of the chair. And, and what is your appeal?
That that motion was out of order, you said it's in order that a person can make your motion at any time and I disagree with it and I wanna test it because that motion was out of order, it was in the middle of an appeal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mays, but please note that your motion was out of order, that we were in the middle of discussion.
But. My point of order, I appeal the ruling, it was your death at this point.
Madam Chair. He didn't get a.
If there's second?
Madam Chair, um, whichever one, this is a.
If there's second?
You didn't get an appeal for his other appeal, you didn't get a second for the first appeal, you didn't ask for an appeal for the first second, so you're moving along, so let's pull back, when you said he appealed to me, you didn't get, you didn't get a chance to ask for a second, I did not second that, you did not ask it, so now you're going to another one, so this is, I didn't know yet already.
You only know that I, I thought that, that you.
No, 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 no.
Because I stated that, um, I stated support of Miss Burns.
No, I did not, let's make that clear.
I said, well, you only.
I, let me finish, Madam Chair, because I'm not arguing, I'm stating what needs to be said, what, because I don't mind interpretation to be done, anybody in this council would be, what I said, I said, thank you, I supported, but he said, I didn't say that was not his appeal, so you got sidetracked, I did not support his appeal.
Yeah, so, so thank you for that, Clerk, so with that being said, what is your point?
As you're on our roots, when I appeal the first one and you got the second, you were supposed to come to me, not entertain evil word of Miss Worden and then say she can make a motion at any time, you had already broke the rules, it was out of order by not coming to me after appeal at the second because it was my appeal, she only get the proper.
Thank you, Lord, thank you, ma'am.
So, one is.
Not at all, so, so what I want to do is um, call this to order and we go ahead and get this back on track, because again, when I was in the process of getting the second, you took the floor within the legal point of order, so as we circle back to the first appeal, do we have any support for the appeal against the ruling of the chair or ruling against, or ruling against Mr. Mays um, discussion of the. So what's your point?
Let's not get swift, you just down said I was illegal and this is your chance to appeal that, nobody's gonna sit here wrong and let you use all these words, stick with what the issue is.
Point of order.
Miss Worden?
This is such a chance to get the floor.
It definitely is, so Mr. Mays, so point of order is in our.
I didn't finish my point, you let your road dog interrupt me, and I was in the middle of making my point.
Mr. Mays, what, what rule has been broken, Mr. Mays?
The rule that says you go to the person who appealed person, I was in the middle of saying that and trying to get this straight down and you keep letting her interrupt me with unlocking with motions.
What's your point?
Points of orders and you cut me off, it was a bad start.
What is your point?
Still, no.
Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays, for the betterment of this meeting, let's proceed, you have a few appeals already, we just started, we want to settle this right away.
I have one request, Madam Chair, a few is more than two, it's two, correct?
So, is there a point for, is there a support for Mr. Mays appealing for the ruling of the chair for discussion of the, of this motion?
Point of order, Madam Chair, my second appeal was keep going and give it this word.
We're, we're not, Mr. Mays, you're out of order, we're not, we're not there.
I appeal your ruling that I'm out of order, point of order and clarify, is in order with ruling me out of order in your conversation because I'm here and when you do it, I'm trying to help you, I'm a period because I can't stand to get.
Point of order, Mr. Mays, Miss Worden?
This is session.
Absolutely, Mr. Mays?
We're asking for a second.
Mr. Mays, please tell me the children want me to take the floor, so again, any support to stand up?
Yeah.
Any support for the field? And how that they're screaming, order in the audience. Thank you.
I'll, um, I'll support his appeal, the first.
Madam Chair, my motion still stands to vote immediately.
Um, I, I didn't hear that. So one second. So supported by Mr. Burns. The first appeal. Okay.
And point of order, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I just like to point out that at the last meeting, Mr. Piper made a motion during the appeal and we voted on.
Thank you. Um, point well taken. So with that being said, to continue with the precedent of this council, this is solely about the appeal and a motion always in order. So, um, so we are on the first appeal and the appeal is for the discussion of the motions. So we will go ahead and start here. So go ahead, Mr. May.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's why you have to stand up.
What, what's your point?
You need to tell your colleague to stop talking.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
Well, let's be clear. I can't tell someone to stop talking. So, um, is, is, is there, is there?
Point of order, she doesn't have the floor, so she should not be speaking.
Right, right.
I, people talk all the time on here. Uh, he was just talking to Tanya and he opened his mouth first.
He using, uh, frivolous motion.
Okay, so, so that's. Point of order, what, what is your point?
First, Madam Chair, please warn her for taking the floor and use a frivolous motion. What's your point? Twenty-six point two, twenty-seven. You need to warn her. If, if the clerk can hear, excuse her, she's talking now. If the clerk, everyone can hear her down there, you can hear her too. You can hear her. And she's speaking very derogatory and she took the floor. She made a motion to take the floor. You know, to put a point of order. She did a frivolous motion. So do you want counsel? Maybe warn her for taking one because she gave a point of order right after the counsel and Piper did. Warn her for making a frivolous motion.
Well, unfortunately, if we're gonna pass out. Then we have to give counsel to Piper one too because we're about to say that they.
You gotta rule on Mr. Piper's point, even though she interrupted with a point of order. You gotta rule on her. This point first.
Point, point of order.
Let me finish. Let me finish. Don't cut me off. You're out of order and that causes confusion. The chair just can't talk over people and be ignored. You've agreed to this early person saying, we should give you one warning and if you continue to interrupt us and do what you do, you're out of order. It should be done. You gotta first rule on this point of order. Then you rule on this word of this point. Then you rule on Ms. Burns' point. I'm not gonna let you glass over these high privileged motions. Let me hear you in that order. Rule on those three points.
Not a problem. So the chair is gonna rule against all three points because if we start the precedent of saying people can't talk up here, then there be no whispering back and forth. She's talking now. So we have to be clear whenever we begin to do this.
Point of order. You need your point of order, Madam Chair. You did not hear and you're gonna say accident. You talk about moving. I did not verbally speak.
Oh, so you wanna talk. Okay. So again, we don't want to set that precedent. So she was not verbally speaking, but she was moving her mouth. That can be viewed as, as talking. So that's why I get to the precedent. And Ms. Worden is saying something that is derogatory that you hear and everyone else here, please put a motion on the floor so we all can vote. But from here, I don't hear. I'm cheering. I'm all here. And also, I'm dealing with request information. What is your request?
My request information is missing close. You said you rule on all three points of order. It's not close. In my mind, Piper's point was wrong. Now, I can ignore it and not appeal your ruling at this point was wrong. We can move on. And I'm gonna do it this one time. But I'm gonna suggest to you that you quit being discriminatory. Quit ruling everybody out of order with their point of order, except for Ms. Worden, because I'm not gonna let it go after this. I disagree with your ruling on Piper's point of order. I will take one for the team. Okay, let me finish. And we gonna see if we can move on. But this is the last time. I'll do that today. So be careful with what you do.
Mr. May, so that's your first warning for a frivolous motion?
I will.
Ma'am, that is your warning.
And this is yours.
Thank you. Also, that is her second warning, ma'am.
And this is yours.
So.
I appeal, I appeal the ruling against the late standing second of order.
For Mr. May's appeal. You remember that. That's what you did.
Um, you don't have to give me just a deal.
Why can't?
Well, I'm.
I'm speaking to everybody. Why do you don't wanna help me?
You remember my hat. That's what you do.
That new hat don't make it look good.
This is a shit show.
So the council will stand at ease until we can get ordered in the chambers?
But then you can get her down, steal this.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the first appeal for the ruling of the chair for any discussion of the motion. So since the maker of the motion is currently bottom of the seat, the chair, go ahead and.
You know, um, the, the motion that was made and voted on was to, um, I think it's also so that we can go out and discuss which, uh, sequence essays. We are still in the process of getting agenda changes.
So why are you typing me?
You don't say shit to them, man. Come on now, fire, man. That's. Wait, they put the camera on.
There is a second. All right, there is a second. Mr. Piper?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
No. No, this four years to come to that motion. All right, so we will continue with that appeal regarding the, the motion, Mr. May's motion. Does anyone else like to speak? Okay, same. Um, no, no, we'll hold ruling of the chair against both of, um, yes, yes, both overturn. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Murphy is absent.
Yes, oh, no, excuse me, no.
I understand.
Madam Chair?
No.
Mr. Piper? It's worth it to come out. The may be sent. This rule is sound. The book is zero yes. Five no, one extension.
Was zero yes, five no, one extension. So the feeling of, you know, ruling of the chair stands. So now we're on to the second appeal, which is saying that the motion, you know, the motion is out of order. And this first motion was out of order. Any discussion?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Piper?
Yes, per rule one point two, the chair should immediately go to the person that made the appeal. So you get the floor to consequently, nine of those, that's the rule. So I give the question to you.
And what was that?
One point two. In an appeal, you state your decision. There are also, the person that made the appeal doesn't say that you entertain motions, uh, one when they're appealed during that.
Okay, anyone else like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Oh, one second. You are absolutely correct. Thank you for clearing that up. Um, so this motion never received a second. So, 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 um, yeah.
She's second.
So it is, it looked, and the maker of the motion not here. So the chair ordered that we drop this motion?
Madam, you have to ask for a second. Um, what, you have to ask for a second.
I'm used to that from the fact.
It's not a motion. It was a appeal. I mean, it's kind of sort of a good motion, but.
Okay, so let me, let me be clear. Um, Attorney Kemp, so, um, so we are at the second appeal and we didn't get a chance to get a, a second. And we move on with the meeting. So is it in order for us to go back to this and get a second? Or since we're gonna move on with the meeting, do we move on with the meeting?
Somebody go get babies.
I'm, I'm. Rules say, the rules say that the request for a second should happen immediately after the. I will do not say what to do in this situation. Where, because if I remember correctly, there is at least one or two other appeals that were made of various rulings that were seconded after the, this one. I'm not sure of the exact count. I'd have to check with the clerk whether that was, there's, there were three appeals or, or four appeals, but. Frankly, I don't think that the rules, what our rules or Robert's rules are necessarily written to address this particular circumstance. I, I just.
Point of order. Okay, is that it?
I, I don't think, in our rules, there's no, there's no here answer and I have to start from here. Robert's would figure out that there's something specific there.
Thank you. What's your point, Mark?
My, my point is that whenever we have a point of order, um, we're supposed to stop ceasing and then that, and also there's appeal. The chair has responsibility to ask for a second. Then I did bring that to your attention, but then there were some other things that ensued right after that. So that it, it, Madam Chair, it got lost and then it went back. So it would've been for you to ask for a second to that appeal. Cause I'd be agreeing to your attention.
Madam Chair, I think in the order, in the interest of their decision, ask for a second. We should do it.
Not a problem.
Oh, God.
We will go ahead and. So, um, is there a second to Mr. May's appeal?
I second that appeal.
All right. Discussion. All right. So the maker of the appeal come on here. Any discussion?
Point of order, is that the appeal that we're going back to counsel and fight for?
No.
No. Can you state the appeal, Madam Chair?
Sure. So the Madam Clerk, will you state the appeal?
She a bad chair.
This will be an appeal that a motion is always in order and that was right after this wording made her motion for leaving. Mr. May appealed it.
So Madam Chair, um, when it came to Councilman Piper, it's because I think you lost track of the sequence. He spoke and then you stated after he spoke, you said, Madam Clerk said that there was no second to appeal and he cited one point two. When he, Mr. Piper stated that you had given the floor and one point two states that begin with the member who made the appeal, that they, the chair's supposed to go to that person first. So I am again for the fourth meeting, I'm lost. I, I, I'm lost. And I'm quite sure the audience is too because discussion was only, we only took discussion for Councilman Piper on that one. And then the clerk stated you had given appeal on that one where he stating rule one point two. And then when, I don't know what you went on to. You went on which appeal that you went on to. But I would ask, um, this is our fourth meeting. We have community meeting. We have, uh, that was the chairman. We have our council meeting.
Please hold on a minute.
Thank you. This is our fourth meeting where these meetings are not being chaired fairly. And I would encourage you to be fair. They're not being fair. You are being on the warning's here. That was your resident who needs a, a vote and she's out of the comments. That's your resident who's been calling you and she came here to speak to you, born and put around. She's frustrated. She's frustrated. So you want to garner respect, you have to give it back also. And even with the warnings here, you're issuing out. You have got to take a step back, pull back, and let's have a meeting to finish these eighteen items. Cause these eighteen items are about to be sold out. And these are being to your chair. So you're gonna have to take some responsibility. You're tall, you're to form your energy. Just put it all feeling so everybody sees. Everybody sees it. So I want you to do this meeting to take care of these eighteen items and to chair fair, not to, you know, to be retaliatory that, that, that. You know, let's, let's not, the conversations, if they can hear way over there from this end, you can hear them too. And I would encourage you to be fair because this is not a meeting you chair and the chair has responsibility to be fair.
Anyone else like to speak on this appeal? Okay, thank you. I'll be the last to speak. Um, unfortunately, um, what we just heard was, um, not dramatic. This is the motion about a motion being in order. We must stick to the point. This appeal, only thing that anyone should be speaking about is exclusively this specific appeal. This appeal is about a motion being in order. That's what this appeal is about. This council has set the precedent that appeal, an appeal is always, excuse me, a motion is always in order. And the body can vote it up, the body can vote it down, but a motion is always in order. At any time, any place. If we want, if we wanna talk about the, the specificity of this, we could have ruled Mr. May's motion out of order. Because we were in the middle of the agenda change. And so if we can, if we look in our role, does it say anything about making a motion during the agenda change? So we don't, we wanna recite the rule. We gotta resign it there entirely. And we're not gonna put motions on the floor for anything and interrupt. We must do that all across the board. And the fact that I gave Mr. May the liberty to put a motion on the floor because a motion is always in order, that's exactly what I did for Ms. Worden. Fairness. He was, he was allowed to do his motion. She was allowed to do her motion. And here we are. So with that being said, um, Mr. May's, his motion was that, that her motion was out of order. So, and the chair said that it was not. So if you would like to overturn the ruling of the chair, you vote yes. If you support the ruling of the chair and being fair on this stupid motion, you vote no. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Um, I'm staying for the chair is not chairing fairly in this meeting.
Yes.
What are the, the, what's, what are we going?
This is the appeal that motion is always in order. From this, uh, origins of the motion.
Madam Clerk, would you speak?
Point of order, we're in a roll call.
How does it feel?
We are in a roll call.
We are in a world call. Should we have no discussion? Yes or no?
I would like to lose. I don't think I spoke.
No. Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Worden?
No. Ms. Lewis?
No.
Yes. Those two yes, three no, and one center?
All right, thank you. I'm going to, uh, you said two, excuse me, two yes, three no, and one center. All right. So the ruling of the chair's fair?
Ooh, yes.
Now, um, so now we're moving to request for changes in the agenda. Do we have any requests for changes in the agenda?
Point of order.
What's your point?
I believe Mr. May's appealed his first warning of us.
Okay, so he's going to give a second. Let me get it. You're not adding it.
Point of order. The chair has to ask.
Okay, hold on. Please, though. Got you. Thank you. Is there, um, support for Mr. May, um, appeal? Is there support for Mr. May's appeal?
Yes.
All right. So, um, so is there support?
Madam Chair.
But you, you said yes, so this is second by Ms. Burns. So since Mr. May is not here, what's your point of order? What's your point of order?
Yeah, you are enough to rat star. I mean, and, and again, you did not, you are in this standing to be, please take a step back. Please take a step back.
So without a second, right? Correct, right? So a second. So, so we gave you the floor. Madam Clerk, our time, go ahead.
Madam Chair, you have responsibility. He's not the one who handed out the warnings to you. And I'm pretty sure you're upset with at least four of your colleagues, and you have four that are of you. Your tone is very negative, your words are very condescending, and yes, it's got to do with, because you want to put them out. You know, you are attacking, you have to, as I said, have a thick skin, and you're not exercising that.
Um, so, so, point of order, so, so just please pause the term, so I just want to be clear. We want to be germane to the appeal. This specific appeal is about Mr. May abusing the request for information. So he called a request for information, and he did not ask a question.
Madam Chair, you probably should give yourself a warning before taking the floor. You need to warn yourself, because you could let me finish. So you need to warn yourself for frivolously taking the floor. And just, Madam Chair, I got a warning, you've warned yourself. You are taking the floor!
That's germane.
No, I mean, you let me finish, because this warning is a part of your conduct, or they're black out. You cannot interrupt the speaker and take the floor. You violate your number one rule, Rule 27-6, Point 227. You continuously violate the rule, the rule that you recite. You recite.
Okay, so, so for all clarity, because our...
Madam Chair.
They have a point of order.
She's got a sword.
I, I, I understand, but we are...
I'm being clear.
She's going for no reason.
No reason? She's not being germane, so if...
Well, she didn't call point of order.
Then we, we will do that. Proceed, and then you give the point.
And then I'm getting a warning?
Proceed.
Wait, 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 this, so you want to warn me? Let me be clear on this, because one, I'm, I'm, one, the stuff that you're doing is ridiculous. You're a terrible chair.
Awful.
You're taking the floor, you need to warn yourself. I have extended courtesies to you. You can't take any self-prisism. You're a terrible chair. These meetings erupt into a dumpster fire because of you, and you probably should resign for taking a fifty thousand dollar adoration. And I want this community, and...
Oh, what's your point?
Please stop my time.
It's not germane to the actual appeal, Madam Chair.
And that is my point. So I say it's germane to the, the point, Mrs. Burns, and the, and the point is we are in an appeal for Mr. May's receiving a warning for abusing a request for information. And that is exclusively what we should be dealing with at this point in time.
And Madam Chair, you're taking the floor, and it was taken again. So you're abusing it, she's abusing it, but you're not warning. So there is a clear double, double standard. You haven't, you didn't even give a point of order when you took the floor. You just took the floor. You didn't even say request information. You didn't even say point of order. Then underneath your mask, you said that I give you a warning. You had enough warnings, you didn't see the bomb. You have a thousand reasons why your residents are saying, please look at yourself and change things. You need to do that. You keep taking the floor. Reason why you had this, because you kept cutting the bomb. You did not get for two, two motions on the floor. You did not get a second. That's the responsibility of the chair. You didn't get for two times. Not once, but twice that you made two decisions. You have to look at yourself and what you're doing, and you're not. No, you, what I'm saying, pull back. You come in here, I'm gonna get everybody down, I'm gonna warn everybody, and it's not germane, we're talking about most one, because you, the chair, do not know, understand what point of measure, point of order, and you keep taking the floor. And you didn't always ask. You're not getting a second. So if you want to have a fair meeting, you have to be a fair person. The role of the chair is to keep everyone in the meeting, to keep the meeting flowing, and to fair, chair fairly. You have done it. Your meetings keep turning to a dumpster fire, and you're the chair. You're chairing this mess.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fieker?
I'm making a motion to move, uh, her, for a second for councilperson that is the chair.
Would you remove the second for councilperson chair of the meeting as their second?
I second that.
And it's been moved across the second by Ms. Burns. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, this is the fourth meeting, that you, we just got up to a terrible spot. And in my opinion, we got up to a terrible spot, because you handing out warnings just wrong. And then you punishing us for saying point of order and trying to keep the meeting on track, but you have not once punished Ms. Worden, and they ain't there, and she ain't been acting. The rules that we voted out said that when there's an appeal, you go first to the person who made the appeal. That's a rule. You couldn't go first to Ms. Worden. So that made, that was out of order. We made all the arguments we can. You're looking stupid in the public eye, and people talking about us, in my opinion, because you ain't been a compassionate or intelligent chair. You bullied. I don't know if it has something to do with trying to clear us out before we get to the disciplinary resolutions given to you and Ms. Burns. Wrong, y'all. Doesn't, in my opinion, but those things have been on the agenda every time you've done this. It's a caution. What you're doing is a caution. I can't speak for Murphy, Briesley, Candace Machet, or Worden, but they can't continue to condone obvious wrongdoing. And the motion that Mr. Fieker made to not let you continue to chair this meeting is to this council's benefit, if you try to get the business of the city done on a tight million dollar bill. And the speech that I'm giving because of the time frames is necessary. Now, I don't care what Murphy, you, Briesley, Machet, and Worden do on this motion, but I know me and Ms. Winfrey Carter came back. We didn't even know the motion that Mr. Fieker was gonna make, but we came back as we stood on the outside and watched this mess. You've been very, very messy, Mr. Liddell Lewis, and you've been messy for the last three meetings. And you don't punish yourself, and you don't punish Ms. Worden. I'm gonna repeat that two more times. You don't punish yourself, and you don't punish Ms. Worden. The tragedy of all of that is it's being condemned by Candace Machet, Briesley, and when he's here, Mr. Burns. That's a fact, being condemned. And the way that you and Perkins wrote, read the rules of that it takes five votes to overturn the chair is contrary to Robert's rules, contrary to common sense, and it's, you got people voting and abstaining wrongly, and that's why we got chaos. And y'all have a fault. It reminds me of the emergency management that Taylor said. We'll figure it out. We'll figure out how to get around it. But for right now, for the fourth meeting, I want to get the business of the city done. And I'm gonna vote yes to not let you continue to chair this meeting and beat up on the different things that we're saying and condone the wrongdoings, or particularly Ms. Worden and this meeting. Ms. Worden has been out of order, dead wrong. You've been out of order, dead wrong. And somebody gotta figure out how to stop this motion that Mr. Fieker has made. I hope people aren't scared of it, because I think we could lie through the business of the city if we can just get you out of the chair for now. This is for the fourth meeting. The same thing. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worden?
I'm very disappointed that my colleague in the eighth ward has chosen to, um, side with chaos instead of order in this specific council meeting. Um, I, I, it's hard for me to believe that we have people on this council actively hindering progress by all the appeals and calls for order, and then they flip the script and say it's me or Liddell out of order, when we just want to get the business done. So if I say point of order, please stay germane, there's a problem, because I'm not letting you state all these lies about all of your colleagues. And I'm over here, because apparently I smell like baloney and disappointment. I decided I would stay over, so, you know, to belong to the business. Um, but I find it all very childish, disgusting, and moral. I'm at the helm. Like, if, if you're gonna run here, that is on you, but we ran into the business of the city done. So if they get enough signatures for any of our recalls, let the process be what it is. But to sign with those who would, this is now the third meeting that we've not accomplished anything, it's gross. It's disgusting. Uh, it's sad. It's all those things. And the crowd here is here specifically for Mr. May's TikTok and to cheer this kind of behavior on, and that's disgusting. Uh, I just want to vote on these issues.
Mr. Menchon, please get in order.
Dr. Lewis just wants to vote on these issues. Ms. Mushah and Ms. Briesley, we all are here to vote and do our job, and they are prevented from doing it. And no amount of people, there could be thousands in here screaming at me right now, saying they hate my guts and I would still do the right thing, because I am not a coward. So, um, Dr. Lewis, I am not leaving this meeting, because I gave it an hour. Uh, I have my children, and I, I came here thinking we'd get things done, but it's very clear to me that my colleagues did not have that intention, so I am not leaving. Thank you.
Yeah, the reason I made the motion is because it's obvious that, um, this body made its incorrect decision by putting you as vice president. Um, that's clear as day as long. You know, if it wasn't the two federal lawsuits that the city has now have to fight because of your chairing, it is now the, the four meetings where you are, the rule wasn't trying to fix, and there's too much controversy with your colleagues that we can't get the city to, to convince. So, right now, you are the reason that we cannot get this to another way, that you are the reason we can't get this. Everybody knows, and, and, knows that the way I've been sitting in my department in the past year and a half, going on two years that I've been elected, I don't get involved in this. But it has come to the, to the realization that we can't move forward with you being the typical, this, very clear. So we have, and the mayor that used the emergency purchasing work is to get things done, because you couldn't chair. So the, the chair's sole responsibility is to move the meeting forward and to get the business of the city done, and you have failed at several meetings, not just these three that were four that we lost forms and couldn't keep the forums. Go back and look at every meeting that you chaired, it's been utter chaos. So while I was staying out of the parade, the time has come for a change in leadership in order to move the city over. What is this?
Anyone else like to speak on this motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Thank you. You know, I stayed here, and, and I don't stay, Madam Chair. But I'll stay here. First of all, Madam Chair, you started the meeting off wrong, and it was, it was indicated by the way you hit the ground, okay? It was harsh. And I sit there, and I say, why? She's coming in with an attitude. You started the meeting off wrong. I knew it was gonna be bad. And I just didn't take it, you know, after working on that, and to come in and to be in the midst of negativity, I wasn't gonna sit up here and, and sit under, uh, sit during this meeting while you chair this meeting with that attitude. It's too much. It's too much. You already come in, your, your tone is hostile, very condescending. We're adults up here. And see, I had, I had to get up and leave, because you, you talked wrong to me. It was, it was gonna, it was gonna be a time up here. I'm not even feeling it today with you. So I didn't leave. I had to cool down. Then we have Paul, um, videotaping individuals. Yeah, he is. Um, that's unfortunate. I don't know, I don't know what he's trying to prove, but I'll be going, yes. Because, uh, you cannot chair a meeting fair at all. You are a terrible chair. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this motion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
Um...
Ms. Burns, please.
Proceed. Thank you. I agree with Councilman Fieker. Councilman Fieker, he...
Councilman Pfeiffer, he does not dream of evolving anything, and for him to have to speak out, I think the ones who sprawled that rolled to the back and went out and used, uh, did who does not, who not do not. By the councilman last weekend, the board on that did not have, she said not. And all of these things are accumulating, and they're continuing to, to roll over to each meeting. It has been continued to chair very casually and unfairly. Because I come to these meetings and I would not expect you to be a real chair. Almost all of your meetings erupt into chaos.
Can I hear you?
Doesn't matter who over at the county, who are in the dome, and here. So it is very prevalent that you do not have or possess the capability of chair, period. You just don't. That is not a skill set that you have at all. I said two last week, I mean, one time, I didn't feel good when you said to me, "Ms. Murphy, you need to run my chair." I take things with constructive criticism. You didn't know what was going on in my mind. That was that one meeting. I never had meetings like you had, not ever when I chaired, not ever. You made a commitment, you ran for the four seat to do the work, you rode the chair and keep everyone in the meeting. Make sure each ward is represented, make sure the meeting is spoken. You weaponized the police on the resident. That was your resident. She needs your help. She needs your help. You warned her and had the police put your own second ward resident out. Did you do that? That's your resident. She has been begging you for help. She called me, and she called, she called Councilman Mays, and we continue to try to help. She can't even stand her home. You spend more time on Facebook with, I'm glad I'm living rent-free in your head, because you stayed on pages in the sixth ward, and I think the sixth ward residents weren't happy. But you, you go all over here putting in some, and then you tell the one lady, "Ma'am." You know, they don't do that. You're disrespectful, you're a very disingenuous person. In order for us to move the business of the city of Flint forward, we need to remove you as chair. We have you, you are unethical. I don't know if you're upset because it was disclosed that you acquired your own nonprofit that was originated, you received fifty thousand dollars, but you did go back and change it because it was on social media today. It was on social media today that you went and changed and took yourself off of there. So you knew you, there was some wrongdoing, or was it the Ashton Capital fifteen hundred dollar check that you didn't disclose? Or the box of cash that the lady came up to, up here and stated for the free venue, you charged five dollars? I don't know, but you continue to gaslight this community. And we have eighteen items on this agenda that we had last week, and we need to take care of this. This was another opportunity for you to come in to be fair. You had been to all his conferences in here, she was whispering in the morning. She been talking underneath that mask. Yeah, you did, you did, and you're not a truthful person. I remember you said, and I was on one of those, I was like enraged, you just said, "Councilman Mays called me a mother effing B," and he didn't. He didn't, you told a lie on him. You said that the news heard, the cameraman said, "No," the journalist said, "No." I asked Judy, she said she had never heard it, and when you do these things, you go, but you never paid with apologize. And so y'all's tone was set way back in two thousand twenty-one December, and you helped to set that tone. So you do play a part in that. When it speaks to Ariel, I would ask you to please extend a courtesy to him, because he, uh, I mean, the American Disabilities Act, he has, uh, some needs that we have to accommodate him for, because he also has a right to stay in these meetings. Please make sure to acknowledge that or to keep him in the meeting. You know, when you're chairing, you can ask office and mancap to help, to help with that. I wanna make sure we're fair, we're all heard. So, removing you, I agree with Councilman Pfeiffer. This is about the business, not the personal, this is the business.
Anyone else like to speak on this motion?
So, Madam Chair.
Ms. Winfrey.
So, my, my whole desire in wanting to be in this seat was to truly move the city forward in this business, do what a council person is supposed to do, not to get into all of whatever has preceded me being here. Being here for a month now, I'm gonna tell you, it has been, um, an interesting experience. It's been unfair for the residents. Um, and, and it doesn't go for one side or the other. We talk so long about the word click here a lot, but the reality is, there is clearly two clicks, since people wanna use the word click, and we need to be fair. Everybody keeps saying the word fair, everybody keeps saying the word fair, but nobody is actually being fair. Everybody keeps saying they wanna get the business done. It's leave this person in their seat, otherwise their ward is not represented. It's, let's go, let's go, let's go. For, for the past four meetings, wards one through nine have gone unrepresented. And I'm not sure why nobody can put behind whatever has happened. I don't expect anybody to like one another. You don't have to talk to each other outside of this space. Most of us don't even see each other outside of this space. But here we are again, more than an hour into a meeting where everybody is proclaiming they want business done, but everybody's putting motions on the floor that are frivolous. Everybody's stopping, everybody is harming the community, and who? To have my colleague in the eighth ward get up out of his seat, go back there to our other two colleagues and tell them to come back and then put that motion on the floor and say outrage? It's fine if you wanna be president, I'm not tripping, I don't care, but don't lie. Don't step behind the cameras and act like you're not doing what we know you're doing. I have no problem with you wanting to be president, that is more than fine. I have no problem if y'all wanna remove her from chairing this meeting, that's more than fine. But quit lying to people and playing in people's face. You know what you just did, we saw it. You went behind the cameras and did. If you want that position, then you need to act like somebody who wants this position. Stand up and do what you wanna do in front of the cameras where everybody can see you. That's all you have to do. You might not like her, you might not like Eric, but they do what they do in front of the camera where everybody can see them. So if you wanna play the big boy game, go in front of the camera where everybody can see you. You're not outraged, you're gonna be president, and that is fine. I'm assuming everybody that's sitting up here has that ambition in some way. No problem, whether your ambition is to be president, whether your ambition is to help for residents, that's fine. But let's not pretend like what just happened didn't just hap- People are free to vote however they vote. They said meeting after meeting, they don't like to rush to chairs, and that's fine, so we know how they're gonna vote. They express exactly how they feel up here in front of the camera where everyone can see them. And that's more than fine, but you, you, oh, you slither. You slither, and I watched you today, but that's not okay. That is not okay.
Anyone else like to speak?
I want to be supporting this motion to remove, um, Councilman Dr. Lewis from his seat, because, um, when I looked at the calendar, we only got three more meetings that, um, she will be chairing before we have to let a new council president. And I appreciate you for trying to give your best to the chair. Have you been a best chair? Yes, you could have, um, standing room for improvement on a lot of areas, but we have talked about this behind closed doors. Uh, and I, on the, uh, um, I, 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 at the last meeting, and I looked at, um, Pfeiffer's, I heard my colleague in the first board get up and degrade Councilman Dr. Lewis and called her stupid several times, and he said it loud enough to where, um, we all could have heard. And when he was saying it, he repeatedly said it over and over and over and over again. I looked at my colleagues and I was looking to see if they heard the same thing I heard. This man has constantly degraded and disrespected us, anybody that don't agree with him. But we all never wanted to really talk about that. I've watched people come before this podium and criticize us, but don't really wanna criticize him when really, in my opinion, he's the problem. And until we deal with the problem, until we stick together and work together and make things happen, things is not gonna, and I, I don't always disagree with, um, some of the things that he say, but it's his tactic, it's his delivery, it's how, it's his approach. It ain't what you say, it's sometimes how you say what you say and how he say what he say. And, and when I first got on this council, and I said, and I still say, sometimes you have to teach people how to treat you, because if you don't teach people how to treat you, they'll get to talking and treating you any kind of way. And then for my colleagues to keep going back as them, um, Dr. Lewis is the problem. We all could be the problem, but what some of us don't do is we don't take responsibility when we wrong too. And some of my colleagues has been wrong too. Y'all tone of voice and how y'all come across, how y'all delivery, when y'all get to talking, y'all raise y'all voice, y'all get to talking loud, y'all get to talking derogatory, making comments towards people, but that's not no problem, because y'all don't see ourselves. And until y'all start seeing yourselves as the problem and being like, "What can I do to check myself, to make myself look better?" It ain't gonna never get, um, better, because y'all don't think y'all do anything wrong. Y'all don't think y'all approach is wrong. Y'all think that y'all can hoop and holler, behind, and then when you go and look at some video footage, when y'all hoop and holler at people, it, it kills, people want to listen to y'all. So y'all ain't always right neither, and yet y'all want people to side with y'all. Y'all just, y'all just as wrong as y'all accusing, um, the chairperson of being wrong. So I want to be supporting this motion, and yes, we do need to move this meeting forward. And yes, I did not come, and when I'm here, um, to the houseman who made the comment that when I'm here, yeah, why I'm come here at five thirty-four and sit here for a whole hour listening to some pills and points of order? I'm not rushing down here and come down here with this. I'm gonna rush down here when we get ready to do some work. Sit up here, listen to points of order, and, um, point of information, and, um, people take the floor and dominate the floor, points of order, points of information, and far as somebody else taking a chair. When Herka Roder was, um, the interim chair and was chairing special affairs, and the, um, president no go and put a motion on the floor when the meeting was chaos to remove her. So now three minutes, three meetings in, before we, um, put a new, um, council president, three meetings left. Now we wanna put a motion on the floor to remove her when Herka Roder was the chair of the special affairs and city council for over six months, and not one motion got put on the floor for her to be removed, and it was chaotic when she was in there, that's why she resigned. I want to be supporting this motion.
Madam Chair. You know, unless you are chairing during the chaos and you don't know how hard it is, we can't get through a meeting without Mr. Mays having trouble with the agenda, and we have appeal after appeal after appeal without approving the agenda. This is the fourth meeting now with the same situation? I'm not the best chair.
Order in the audience, please. Thank you.
None of us are the best chairs up here. All of us have had our issues chairing. Trying to keep track of appeals and seconds when chaos is occurring is difficult. You have to be very careful and write everything down, and sometimes things go so fast that you're unable to do it. I watched the video from Thursday. I was actually on my way here when I got the word saying, "Don't bother coming." And, um, I watched the video. There was a couple of rulings that I questioned Dr. Lewis on, but overall, I didn't have too much of a problem with it. Knowing what we go through as chairs. So, I'm going to vote to support Dr. Lewis tonight.
Thank you, Ms. recently. I just, uh, just wanna highlight something real quick, um, as I go on. If I would have supported that, um, that point of order by ruling even worthy out of order for talking during the meeting, I would have currently go over there and rule of Councilman Mashad and Councilman Murphy out of order. You don't wanna set a dangerous precedent by telling people that they can't talk. What you can't do, you can't disrupt. They were not disrupting the meeting. And so, what we must do, we must be clear in everything that we do. Let's start here. Let's ask the president her thoughts on what happened. Absolutely, she's not here because she resigned because of this chaotic nature here. I didn't sign up to be vice president. It wasn't my plan, I was voted in, okay? And so, as I sit in this seat, my PhD that I earned is not in political science or council, but I took the oath that I will sit in this seat, I will learn, I will take my criticism like I do, and I will be better for the next meeting. I made the goal to follow the rules. Um, please stop the talking. Let's have someone up there out of order, and they keep on blurting out.
This is an audience, that goes stepping you here, you should definitely be ready to keep moving, don't you, Ed?
Again, Mr. Mays, you just used the floor to abuse a privileged woman, and that's where I'm going. So when I sit in this chair, I don't care if you are in the audience, I don't care if you are up here, you will follow these rules. And the only thing I'm doing, I'm just highlighting the rules. If we didn't want to follow these rules, this body wouldn't have voted on it. So let's go ahead and take it from the top. If you're talking and it's not relevant to the motion or the appeal, you're not being germane, and you're in violation of rule twenty-nine point seven. And according to our council rules, the chair has the responsibility to bring you to order. And if you refuse to be brought to order, you are being disorderly. Furthermore, you cannot abuse privileged motions. You can't use point of information, point of orders unless it is a real breach. A point of order is breaching the rules or request for information you're asking question that you not know. If you misuse those two things, you're being improper. It, it seems like it is a witch hunt on me when I'm just trying to follow the rules and I catch my colleague being out of order. It's okay if you don't like me, but only thing I'm doing is just being a mere reflection of the rules. And so, uh, Mancap, would you please step over there and make sure that we have order in the prior? I'm not saying, you've been in hold the time, I'm not saying remove anyone, but also according to the rules, the public cannot yell out and speak unless they're at the lecture, unless they're at the lecture. Thank you. These are our rules, you just can't yell out and blur it out. Or you will be out of order, according to our rules. Regardless if you like me, if you care for the way I chair, that's okay, because the way I chair is a direct reflection of the rule. If you don't like it, please, I encourage you to change the rule. Ms. Murphy was brought to order last meeting because she got out of her seat.
What's your point, are you being germane?
No.
Last meeting ain't got nothing to do with you being removed.
As I'm making my point, because we're talking about the chair and the rules and your order going, huh? And so, what we're doing is, Ms. Murphy, God, I- And so, what we're doing is, Ms. Burnes got out of her seat, and when she got out of her seat, she began to converse with an audience member. Looked up, and I saw a finger in the face, and I heard, come on, can you understand, but I heard dialogue. And so, when I heard that, we can smile, but that's what happened. And so, according to our rule, twenty-seven point two, you can't for any reason be argumentative with an audience member.
Give my chair information.
What is your point?
So you're telling me you could hear me back there, but you can't hear Ms. Worthy over here?
I just said exactly what I said. I couldn't hear what was said from Bayla, but when I looked up, I saw that well-managed finger pointing at Mr. Man.
Request for information. I would like, you know, I have not had a feeling that I'm phoning.
Again, that is an improper use of request for information. What is your request? So, so, we can play the game like the second word councilperson doesn't know what she doing, but when, but when our first word colleague is not here, we're gonna get ordered. These meetings are hard to run, but when you continue to use privileged point of information and you continue to speak out, call the chair stupid, you are bringing this order to this meeting. And so therefore, the chair might get a little wonky, but everyone else will. See, I have the courage and the audacity to enforce these rules. I, I, I don't fly by that, I don't know where the wind may go. I stay firm on what, on what the rules say, and if it's not a reflection of the rules, I won't do it. So let's go ahead and get to the point. My colleague said I hit the dabble too hard, wow. And then it was a motion on the floor, to, um, a, a motion on the floor, talking about, uh, a motion being in order. Mr. Mays got his motion in the middle of the agenda change, when Ms. Worthy put her motion on the floor, all of a sudden it was out of order. We, you must be fair, and if you wanna make people like the bad guy, that's fine, but I guarantee no one else can do it better under these deep hostile working conditions. So, if you would like to vote. What do you?
I don't wanna get in trouble, but it's two rounds and five minutes, so it ain't voting time yet.
Now, Chair, it's two rounds, right? And so, just making sure that we are in our, in alignment with the rules. So make sure that we're in alignment with the rules. So, um, thank you, Madam Chair, and my, my clerk, and I will move on to the second round, anyone in the second round?
Yeah. Why you don't have a thing, man? I'm wanting that brother to your attention, this is the point. Mr. Murphy, if it hits the priest, he dogged the hell out of me when he came on this council, PM, Madele Lewis, go back and look at the tape. Madele Lewis used to tell Herka Roder, calling her order, give him a one. They dogged me out, and had been here for four months. And you look at Channel Twelve, Channel Twelve News gave us accolades. I said suspend the rules, act with common sense and courtesy. In the first two, three months, Channel Twelve said it blew through the business, they was giving us good breath. The minute that Quincy Murphy, Madele Lewis, Herka Roder, and Worthy convinced Priestley and Viper, not the suspension rules, it's been chaos everything. And this, Miss Seth, look at what you just did. You said you came to get the business done, and you called that man like a slippery snake. That man you in it, you in it, it don't take long to get in it.
Right.
Name calling, I was dogged out after four months by these council people. I had to up proud and bring my family and friends, I'm the president, they took me down. They wanted to be the chair, the president, now you hear this preaching, it's more difficult than you think. I've been doing that, I've been there for ten years, but we were getting good grades. But to no one wants to be chair, wants to be president, and I know how I know that, because both, they were sworn in. Me and Miss Winry Carter met with Madele Lewis, and then we met with Tajira, before they was sworn in, because after they sworn in, I don't even talk to the first councilperson at the time, a hundred percent, Madele Lewis wanted to be president. She wanted to be vice, she just had a speech, and was voting in. She manipulated with presence, she wanted him, called me and told me I could be her vice. Eight hours after Seattle Bridge was broken, they did backstabbing and doing for months. Now, I'm advising, don't get in it. Mr. Viper, I don't hardly talk to him, he walked back there to ask me and Miss Jimmy Winry Carter to come up, we didn't even know when he was gonna put the motion on, but we just know this council. We trust him, and that was a slippery snake to me. That took a lot of effort, 'cause he know I don't deal with him, Herka Roder, you, Priestley, many others, then, outside of the meeting. But that's how you do it, sometimes you trust folks, you compromise. Y'all can condone and wrong roots, just like today, yeah, I'm telling you. Look at our council roots, they go through procedures and vote it out. They say when an appeal is made and seconded, you first go to the person who made the appeal. Can't change that rule. She went to Eva Worthy first, Worthy put a motion on the floor, she changed my appeal as we stood back there, we listened to a motion as an order, that wasn't the appeal. The appeal was you gotta go to the person who appealed first, she didn't, we didn't have to bother. So she can write notes and try to correct it, but you might not know. You might not know that Mr. Viper don't remember you calling him a slippery snake. Now, you out of order, 'cause you talking because I'm talking, it's hard to be perfect, uh. And so, you knew, don't hold it against him. Hold some stuff against her, she been rude and nasty, I been watching her demeanor. Mr. Murphy and Ms. Priestley are saying, but they won't win. When, the way you attack him, I don't know, and thank you, don't know. It matters less to me, but I watched everything, I like his demeanor and self-worth as well, and then I watched the application of the room, she's very aggressive and angry.
Ms. Viper?
Thank you so much. I just wanna point out that the chair is an embodiment of the rules. But Madam Clerk, is there two rounds? You don't know the rules. You don't know the rules, so it's your dumb chair, the way you're supposed to chair. And Miss Lucette?
Lucette.
Whatever it is. I didn't, if I would've called them back here to sit in their seat, I would've been out of order. I was in order to go back in the back of the room, to bring my colleagues back up. That is bringing people together, that is putting people back in their seats, instead of removing them every damn meeting is what the chair's trying to do. Because, uh, my colleague in the business would probably be gone right now, so, she was packed up and gone. But here we are, trying to get them, to move the city forward, and if my colleague's in three and four, now I wanna vote for that, I can count votes, it's gonna be four to four. I'm not, like, it is what it is, but unless we address the monkey on the, in the room, and the negative, the negative things that you bring to chairing, and unless we address that, we are not gonna move forward. Plain and simple.
Request member man?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Do you, do you request member man? Do you, to the speaker, you want the elephant in the room?
Yes, yes. I don't have to, I don't need anything. Um, I'm trying to portray that I'm willing and trying to move the city a foot forward, and it's obvious that your hate towards your colleagues is stopping the virus. Plain and simple. Your hate towards everybody, even your demeanor in your last speech was so condescending. And so, my shit don't stink, chat to you, that, woo, it's appalling. It's appalling. And Dr. Lewis, I don't have anything against you. I don't, honestly don't, I, we've, we've had, what, three or four conversations period in the year and a half, two years? But when you stop the city of the flip business by the way that you rule, and the colleague in the ninth ward can do no wrong, and you wanna rule, um, the colleague in the sixth, seventh ward, eighth, or sorry, the sixth ward for pointing their finger, and you can definitely not hear what she's saying, so you're gonna rule her out of order and give her warning the last meeting, and then ask for evidence, that's not the way it rules. You're ruling because of hate, and that's the only way to rule.
She got hate.
That's it, thank you.
Ms. Murphy?
Who?
Oh, yeah, I, I, yes, um, I, I, in all due respect, um, to my colleague, um, Viper, I deny you like the word that you characterize as monkey in a moment. Um, just for the record, whether it's lunch, or in the room, or whatever, you choose, that was, I think, a bad choice. And then my, um, colleague in, um, the first ward that talked about, um, him, when we personally came on city council, um, and he, we, we, we had it out. One thing for sure, and two things for certain, if, if it wasn't a secret, me and you getting really careful each other. I did not buckle in my colleague.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Do you mean to say it's no secret you didn't care for me, I like everybody, till they prove otherwise? Okay, don't speak for me, care for you, speak for you not caring for me, would that be a fair request?
No, watching him.
That is improper. Request for information.
It would've been a cold day in hell before Councilman Murphy would have voted for the councilman in the first ward for president to, um, leave us, so I knew that going in. So 'cause I didn't vote for him for president, then I had it out for no one, I knew exactly what I was doing, I knew his characteristic. Why? Because for ten years that he's been on city council, not one majority of the council, not here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years, did any council member, majority of any council vote for you for president? Why? 'Cause they think you're hair crimson, and they knew they wasn't gonna get it. As soon as you became the president of this city councilman, during the time that five of, of this council thought that it would be a wise decision, you didn't last over six months. I knew what I was doing. And I will not be supporting this motion, and yes, it may be four of us that vote against it, and I'm one of them. I'm not voting to remove her, because y'all think, um, whatever the, um, situation in the room, 'cause I ain't gonna call it what you call it, that she the problem, no, she ain't the problem, the other councilman in the first ward is the main problem that nobody wanna talk about. I will, that's the problem.
What is your request?
Is it possible she could be part of the problems, or did the same problems exist, and I was gone for thirty days?
Right.
For problems, what about that?
Yeah.
Mr. Mays?
That was proper.
That was improper.
That was proper.
Go ahead.
For thirty days, Madam Chair, I pay a warrant for the rude decision of the chair.
That's fine. So, um, Madam Clerk, would you give that? Thank you.
On the board, here we go. Your job is asking there a second. You don't know how to say it.
What are you talking about?
Oh, did you ask him, was there a second, I just didn't hear. Who did you ask him, when did you ask?
Cause he appealed it, right, wasn't no second, he appealed it.
Mr. Mays, um, Mr. Viper volunteered the second before she could ask.
He made the motion.
I did a point of what I asked her to ask at that second, to Mr. Viper.
I am sorry.
Are you slick, because you didn't.
I always apologize, Mr. Mays, I always apologize when I'm.
Are you now?
So, this is, Mr. Mays, thank you, Ms. Priestley, so, um, so, Mr. Viper put a, uh, a field in the floor in their second. In their second.
Madam Chair, I say I support Mr. Viper's motion.
Second by, Mr., um, Ms. Burnes.
She a bad chair.
No, okay, so we're gonna, um, continue, 'cause we still have some more motion, we were in the middle of appeal for character. So, let's go ahead and, uh.
No, it's not an appeal. No, it's not an appeal. It's not an appeal. This is a appeal.
Okay, so let's be clear, I'm just not, because when the motion was removed, we were in the, in the middle of, um, finishing up the appeal for Mr. Mays giving his, we issued his first warning.
No.
Yes.
Y'all was on the second discussion, man.
So, so, again, let's have order.
Y'all was on second discussion.
Madam Chair, I ask the clerk, so that you're correct.
Well, hold on, well, let, let's make sure that we are, um, clear where we are now, so, Mr. Mays? Point of order. Yeah, so, stand at ease, and we're gonna go ahead.
Point of order.
I was point of order. I was even though it's standard ease.
According to our rule, it is a brief pause, so the chair and the body can get their information together. What, what is your point?
You gotta take a B cool appeal, 'cause this is, can you please ask the, the clerk? Because I think this is not the third time that he has come before that a motion has not been asked for a second. So that there's no more asking, I was trying to keep track. Third appeal by Mr. Mays for his line, his first line for presenting his motion, he's going with Mr. Viper, they have his motion to the, the second one is chair. So you still have that appeal plus this newer one.
And also, Madam Clerk, so I also wanna clarify to you, because you put a motion on the floor to, um, regarding the appeal, regardless of voting immediately for the appeal, so we were still on that as well, correct? You know, did we ever address that, did we ever address that?
That motion failed.
Did we vote on it? We didn't vote on it?
Yes, you didn't, it failed.
We vote on, we vote on?
This is a terrible chair. This is, this is a terrible chair.
Yes, Madam Chair, the, the motion to table all ten of the deals.
No, 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 that's not what she said, the first, when you first started this meeting, when she initially put, when she initially put a motion on the floor, when Ms. Mays appealed the ruling of the chair for that motion, um, we had, um, out of order, remember, he said the motion was out of order? And the motion that she made on the floor was to vote immediately.
Motion to remove her as chair, man, no deal.
Okay.
So that motion.
Okay, all right, and so for the, we need for all members to stop yelling now, so Mr. Jones? So, Mr. Jones, will you stop yelling out to the crowd? All right, so we are
It was me.
Here at, through the, so, at that appeal, a lot going on here for no reason. All right, so we are at the appeal of Mr. Mays, uh, well, no, I think you have to go back. And see, and this, this is that part, this is what we, Madam Clerk. How, what's your feel, um, are we on right now? Because we never where exactly where we are.
Remove you from the chair, second round.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, that is your warning.
She is.
For, for the order. Madam Chair, we were asked to that and you're, you're doing that to the audience. And I think you're lost. Maybe you can make, take a little bit of recess to collect yourself so that we can move on.
Right.
Just put no, don't put no fat more than that deal.
All right, so I think Mr. Mays was in, uh, he was in the middle of his debate.
No, it wasn't. It was Quincy debate.
We were on the second round on the motion to remove me from chair.
That is true, and so that's what you're going through now for second round. And that's for two minutes and twenty-nine seconds left in the second round.
Yep.
I thought that Mr. Murphy was talking. And I did a request for information to clear up whether Mr. Murphy remembers. There was a thirty day period that I had nothing to do with anything else that you had. That's what I was.
You are, you are absolutely.
You had to remember to be a good chair. And that's what we're trying to tell you. Don't claim yourself. It's just a typical.
Mr. Mays, thank you.
You wanted to.
Mr. Mays, thank you.
So you were.
So, so the chair order a final recess without a decision.
I know, I can't take it either. This is. I'll walk you down. We didn't take the five. We'll be right back, fam.